Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone. For the record, Trustee Vasquez is present virtually with us this evening. So, welcome Trustee Vasquez. Can you hear us?
Thank you. Yes, yes, thank you.
Great, thank you.
For allowing me to attend this meeting virtually.
Before we start our meeting, as a reminder to those in our audience, we do have registration for anyone who would like to comment to the board on any of the actionable items on our agenda. There are forms up near Attorney Elwood. Just fill out a form, return it to the board table. We also have public comment available at the conclusion of our meeting for any topic you would like to bring up to the board. And once again, fill out one of the forms and return it to Attorney Elwood, and you will be recognized. All members of the board were provided background information to the items on tonight's agenda in preparation for this meeting. Our meeting is also being livestreamed, so we welcome those who are viewing remotely. So, we'll begin our meeting this evening with our student and staff presentations. We have the Trio presentation from Mr. Macy O'Rainey. So, Mr. Rainey, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the Board of Education, Madam Superintendent, faculty and staff, community members, parents, students, community members, and esteemed guests. My name is Macy O'Rainey, and I serve the community as a director of a pre-college program located on the campus of Purdue University Northwest, known as the Trio Educational Talent Search Program, that's responsible for bringing hundreds of thousands of dollars, of federal dollars, from the United States Department of Education, right here to the counties of Lapeur County, Porter, Lake County, as well as Starr County, for a plethora of educational services to help income-eligible and potential first-generation college students make the transition from completing high school and transitioning into college. I myself was a first-generation college student. My parents are proud blue-collar workers. Our father's a retired bricklayer, and mother is a retired seamstress. So, it was time for me to graduate high school and transition to college. It was very minimal in terms of their support and knowledge because they themselves did not go to college. And that's where the Trio program comes in at, to help students that self-identify as first-generation college, finish high school, and transition to college. But most importantly, ladies and gentlemen, it's the byproduct of a great collaboration between Portage Township Schools, the federal government with Trio, and our local university, Purdue University Northwest. I am not a recruiter for the university. My job and my responsibility is to help young people finish high school and matriculate to post-secondary at any level and at any college, the right college of their fit. So, I wanted to put that disclaimer out immediately so that the community can understand my purpose and my role. Moving on, I wanted to share with you all a scope of our staff on the campus of Westville that works with the Trio program that services the schools that we have in our grant, especially Portage Township, the high school, and the two middle schools, Fagley and Willow Creek. We believe that planning for college and getting on that track for college readiness does not begin when you're a junior at Portage High School. It begins as early as the sixth grade, and that's where our recruitment starts. But we noticed in our construction of our grant that the dynamics of many of our local high schools had anywhere between 200 to 300 students per grade level with maybe one or two guidance counselors. That's where we come in at, as an organization and as an entity within the university that supports our local high schools in the areas of college and career readiness. I serve as a programs director, and as you can see, we have four other staff members that help round out our team, that supplies everything from tutorial support to college tours to 21st century scholar registration, you name it. Moving along, you're probably asking yourself, "Well, Mr. Rainey, what is Trio? And what programs does it involve?" Well, the long and the short of it, ladies and gentlemen, is that the Trio program comes from the vision of the late '36 President of the United States, London Baines Johnson. He himself grew up with impoverished means, humble beginnings, in the state of Texas that used his circumstance and education to rise to a level of prominence. And out of his vision as a president came the Higher Education Act of 1965 that created the three Trio programs, as we know, that are still alive today. Talent Search, Student Support Services, and Upward Bound. Some of these programs are pre-college, and the other portions are active college programs, all of which comes the funding from the U.S. Department of Education. So, we thank our congressional reps that work in Washington, D.C. to bring these federal dollars back to District One, Lake County, and District Two, which is Lapeur County and Starr County. Those federal dollars helped move the needle forward in terms of providing college access to our region's income-eligible and first-generation college students. So, that's the background of our funding and the monies that are provided to us to help move our program forward. Probably one of the most important values that we add as a partner to Portage is a plethora of community services and pre-college services that we provide students who are enrolled in our Trio program. Everything from college visits to SAT test prep to 21st century scholar enrollment. But my most important one that I really want the community to really hone in on is FAFSA assistance because that determines how much money students are able to qualify for to attend college. I don't think I have to tell anyone in this room that college is expensive. And we want to be able to provide students and parents with the opportunities to finance a college education with their available options. And it starts with completing a FAFSA. Moving on, every year we have an annual summer college tour because it's so important that we get young people in front of college recruiters, scholarship officers, and people from the university that can speak to the importance of attending college and what college means to workforce development in our region. So, we had three major objectives that we wanted to complete for this year's college tour with the emphasis on a metropolitan education. So, we picked Chicago as a place to expose students to. And under these objectives, we wanted to meet with college admissions to talk about the majors the universities offer. A lot of schools are going test-optional now for SAT. So, we wanted to take a deeper dive into what does that mean to have test-optional components, what it means to write a quality essay for college and scholarship assistance. And we also want to provide the opportunity for Portage High School students to actually interact and interface with active college students. I have with me now, with me that will assist me, Ms. Maraisha Johnson, who's a senior at Portage High School now that attended our trip. Other students had a lot of other things to do, sports, activities, working a job. But the best I could get this year was a student that wants to come in front of the board and share their experiences with me in my presentation. So, I'm thankful that Maraisha came with me today to accompany me because a talking head like myself is better to hear from the actual customers and the clients who benefited from our college tour. But the last piece that we had as well was the actual cultural experience that we wanted to provide our students with a sense of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and the belonging aspect as they look for different colleges to evaluate. So, those are the three major goals that we had in planning our trip. And it's important that I share too that while students are under our direct control and influence, we're responsible for our travel, our lodging, and our food at no cost to the parents and the students. The entire trip and the entire expenses, our government funded through the federal grant. But we stayed in a five-star hotel, as well as visiting nice places for food. And also, our travel arrangement normally consists with a charter bus with all the amenities such as Wi-Fi, bathrooms, luxury seats, you name it. A really good experience, wouldn't you say, Maraisha?
Yeah, I agree. Everything was free, and everything tastes better when it's free. The entire trip, I spent $2, and that was just because I wanted something I didn't even use. So, yeah, that was my personal money. But everything else, the hotel was really nice. The food was really good. All the whole three days we were there, it was a really great experience, at no cost.
I like that. Tastes better when it's free. Alrighty. Moving along, our first step was Chicago State University, in which we were able to meet with an admissions counselor who talked to us about the application process, what it means to complete a FAFSA, what it means to, and what the components of a good essay looks like. So, I thought it was great that the students were able to hear that coming from the college admissions counselor. And most importantly, the opportunity for the admissions counselor to showcase the university, what the university is known for, the majors they offer, and more importantly, the available scholarships that the university is able to offer. We also toured the dorms and had an up-close and personal look at the students' living arrangements on campus, and also what students do on their spare time in college to relax, to unwind. And we visited the Student Activities Center, and we used that as a baseline to compare with other universities that we would visit along in this trip. As you can see in the picture here, students did everything from playing indoor basketball to video games, to playing ping-pong, and just having a really laid-back student atmosphere for students to relax on campus. So, we took inventory of the student life on this campus and what students do in their spare time on the campus. Shortly after that, we had a cultural experience at the Millennium Park and also at the 360 Experience at a building downtown Chicago to provide students with the opportunity to see what a Chicago skyline looks like, and most importantly, take a look at the economic heartbeat of downtown Chicago. And what we found out was a lot of different interesting STEM-related careers that encompass when students look down in that window. Maraisha, would you like to comment on your experience visiting the Millennium Park, the Bean, and also the 360 Experience?
Yeah, so I liked both the Beans a lot because I had never been to the Bean. That was my first time being at the Bean. And the 360 Experience, that was a, it was a time because I'm very afraid of heights. So, that was like, you're going up super high, and it was crazy. But I liked how they always give you a lesson with every single trip. It's like fun, but you're also learning at the same time, so it makes it even more fun. So, it's giving both at the same time, which is really cool.
One of the things that we also noticed too on that trip is that at this particular trip on the top floor overlooking the Chicago skyline is that they made it obvious that Chicago was a community made up of various ethnic neighborhoods all throughout Chicago. And just the history, the breakdown of those ethnic neighborhoods were a great lesson in diversity, equity, and inclusion and belonging, and how those ethnic neighborhoods contributed to the fabric of Chicago. And that was one of those experiences that Maraisha was talking about. Being on that cliff, on that edge is risk management at its best. But what a great experience. Also, part of the cultural experience as well is that we were able to visit historic Hyde Park and found the residence of former President Barack Obama and his home that he owns in the Hyde Park section of Chicago. Secret Service would only let you go so far on that block because they protect his home. But we were able to stand right in front of the former president's house in Hyde Park, take a group picture, but also have a conversation on the significance of President Obama's presidency and some of those factors, and really take a deeper dive, look into that part of United States history. And they were able to see it up close and personal. Also, one of our rounds on our college tour was to visit the University of Illinois at Chicago, also known as UIC, as another metropolitan university. And what we found in terms of their commitment to 21st century learning is that they've remodeled majority of their lecture halls because students will be making that culture shock in transition from a basic classroom to a lecture hall that holds hundreds of people. But the university has modified their lecture halls with a lot of technology equipment inside of the lecture hall. Maraisha, can you speak to what you saw when you visited those classrooms, those lecture halls at UIC?
Yeah, so honestly, when I walked into there, I kind of thought about A-Hall in Portage High School. Like, it all just seemed really new. And in the picture on the left, whenever the teacher, like, if you had a question, there was a certain button you could press on, and the teacher could choose you, and you could talk. So, the whole class would hear you because there are speakers everywhere. So, I thought that was really cool because I had never seen that in a university before.
That collaboration piece looks totally different in terms of the way how students are able to communicate with their instructors and transmit information. Yeah, the technology component is so critical because we noticed that all the universities are competing around innovation. They want to be able to provide quality experiences to their students that will make them different from their competitors in higher education. And we also noticed too, even at the library, the university customs and traditions with the dog as a mascot is the way that students rent books and return books at the university. It was a little bit of a university tradition that we were able to be exposed to. And I don't know if you guys can relate to this, but they have this new thing going on in college now, something known as the Power Nap, that you'll see these bubbles all over campus where students can literally climb under there for a nap because the professors are sending this new innovative brain research now that says if you have a power nap and relax for a few minutes, you can come back to class refreshed and able to get the most out of your cerebral cortex.
I want one of those.
But it feels like a nap to me, right? So, yeah, all throughout the universities, again, competing around innovation. And at Purdue University in West Lafayette, they have these little robots, these AI-based robots that are delivering coffee. And they send you a verification code to your cellphone, and then you put it in your cellphone. Then the top pops, and there's your latte with cream and sugar delivered to you. Long gone are the days of going, when I was in college, you had to actually go off-campus to get a cup of coffee. Now, they deliver it to you with a robot now on certain campuses. So, again, they're all competing around innovation. Quickly, just being, the notion of being in higher education in a metropolis like Chicago, you're in the middle of downtown Chicago, and that alone is a culture shock to some that have grown up in places opposite of a metropolitan like Chicago. But the university is located right smack dab in the middle of downtown Chicago, and that comes with their attraction of recruiting students to attend their university. Moving on to Northeastern Illinois University, it was so refreshing to have students that are actual college students talk and have plane talk to the next generation of students with focus on campus life and dorm life because that's something different. Living in the dorm is something different than, I like to believe, of living at home at this time because you're living with strangers and people that you're meeting for the first time. And it was great having actual college students talk to our students about living the dorm life and all of the accommodations that need to go with that. Maraisha, was anything you'd like to share as you listen to the young lady who talked about dorm life that you'd like to share?
Yeah, so this was my favorite college that we went to. One, because we guys actually talked to three or four students. They kind of switched off whenever we got to certain parts. So, hearing from a student and their experience and their, like, life in the college was really nice compared to an administrator or something who's trying to get you to go to the college. They're saying all the pros and the cons that you won't hear online and stuff. And the dorm, that was the nicest dorm I've ever seen in my life. You can't see, but there's like four separate rooms. Like, it's very renovated. And the whole school, it was very comforting because it reminded me of a high school, like, just different sorts of high schools. So, yeah, I liked that one.
That was definitely an attraction for that university was their thing-of-the-art dorms. They were like apartment suites, complete with a stove, a refrigerator, microwave, like a miniature condo, so to speak. Moving on as well, we also noticed at Northeastern Illinois that they put a lot of emphasis on student life as a form of networking and building social capital for students. They have a plethora of fraternities and sororities for students to get actively engaged in, to develop lifelong friendships, and more importantly, the networking base with the alumnus that come along with that as well. And I saw out of all of the colleges that we visited that Northeastern Illinois had as a showcase of the university, their robust student life with the fraternities and sororities that they have actually chartered and operating off of their campus in a very diverse manner. So, it's something for students to consider, getting active and engaged. An engaged student at a university is more likely to be on that track to graduate within a reasonable timeframe because they're engaged. And we thought that exposing students to that networking piece that student life has not only creates lifelong friendships, but also a networking base for them. The next part of our trip was the Chicago cultural, the architectural, architectural and engineering component because we wanted to expose young people to careers in engineering and architecture, anything having to do STEM-related. So, I figured, what way to teach that than getting them out on a boat when it's 90 degrees? At least I would have somebody's attention. But we rented out a boat at Navy Pier and did a Chicagoland architectural tour of a lot of different buildings and structures downtown Chicago. And we also noticed in this experience that so many of these important buildings downtown Chicago have world headquarters located here in Chicago, and they will hire architecture majors and engineering majors right out of high, right out of college to work downtown Chicago because these industries need a workforce. As you can see, we saw from the water, we saw the building known as the Sears Tower and a plethora of buildings designed by female architecture and engineers downtown Chicago. I mentioned earlier about the world headquarters. You have businesses such as Boeing. McDonald's has a headquarters in Deerfield and in Chicago. Morton Salt, Walgreens, Tyson Chicken, a lot of profit-seeking Fortune 500 companies call downtown Chicago home as their corporate world headquarters. And again, I mentioned earlier that they're hiring right out of college, STEM majors, architects, engineers, to provide students with access to those pathways. And of course, Boeing, I mentioned, is downtown Chicago as well. Probably the most, one of the fun times that students had was the crosstown rivalry that we went to later on that night to see the Chicago White Sox battle the Chicago Cubs. It was a rough night for my Chicago White Sox. I know because I got an earful from Maraisha right here, sitting next to me. But Maraisha, would you like to comment on your experience at Guaranteed Rate Field? But to me, it's the old Comiskey Park.
That was my favorite time the entire trip because I love the Cubs and I love baseball. Yeah, Cubs fans, woo! The Cubs are, they smoked the White Sox. But it was really fun getting to speak to Mr. Rainey the entire time and Mr. Rebecca, who was also on the trip with us, and all the students with us. That was a really great time to balance the learning with the fun.
I tell you, I was speaking of the comeback. I thought the Sox were going to come back after maybe a six, seven-run deficit, but it never happened. It seemed like that gap got wider and wider by the second. But nonetheless, it was a good time. And that's part, again, about being in a metropolitan area like Chicago, the customs, the traditions, and things of that nature, that we wanted to provide that experience to students. And also, the careers that go along with. You don't have to make a, you don't have to swing a baseball bat to make a lot of money at Guaranteed Rate Field. There's other career pathways such as managing, marketing, doing player contracts. Those are all jobs that require a four-year bachelor's degree that you can actually run a professional baseball team by virtue of the qualifications and the education that you have that do not require you to swing a bat or catch a ball. Something for students to consider as they plan their majors and career paths moving forward. I want to thank the Chicago White Sox for being able to provide that opportunity and all the Chicagoland sports teams that have done that for our Trio programs in the past because those represent potential career pathways that require a four-year bachelor's degree that speaks to the notion of helping Indiana turn into a college-going culture as a state. What's on the agenda now as I get ready to land my plane is that for FY '23, FY '24, there's a couple of programs I want to make sure the community knows about that's going to be at the forefront of our programming for this year. Everything that consists of SAT test prep, which is a big one that I want all Portage High School students that are in a Trio program to understand. By just taking the SAT exam and scoring just a few more points than you'd like to score, qualifies you for hundreds of dollars of merit-based scholarships that you're able to leverage and negotiate for yourselves because a lot of colleges in the state of Indiana are saying that they're test-optional now. And that's simply, that's jargon for, you don't have to take the exam to send us your application. But what they're not telling you, by not sitting for the exam, you disqualify yourself from merit-based scholarships or put yourself at the top of the line for scholarship consideration. So, we want our students to sit for the SAT exam and do their very best and then negotiate some of their college expenses based on having a very competitive SAT test prep or SAT score. And then also, in the fall, we do our annual in-state college tour. Majority, or not all of our students, but majority of them, if not all, are 21st century scholar students, which means that if they follow the scholar track all four years of Portage High School and graduate with a certain GPA and meet the qualifications, they can go to any college in the state of Indiana, basically, free of charge. And with us tonight, we have Mr. Fred Jackson from the Indiana Commission of Higher Education. Fred, if you could wave? That's the foremost authority for 21st century scholars for this region. So, it's so important that there's alignment with not only the school district, but our federal programs, and also with the state of Indiana, with the Higher Commission, about alignment for 21st century scholars. And then also, in February, we do the United States Hispanic Leadership Institute, known as USHLM. Every year, we do that Student Leadership Conference and a plethora of services throughout the year. And then we'll wrap it up at the end of the year with a summer college tour for 2014, which is to be announced. I have to point to an area on the map and see where we want to go for this summer, the upcoming summer, to visit colleges and have a cultural tour. So, those are the things that are on the agenda for this upcoming year. And I also wanted to share with the board and also the community who's eligible for these services. One, these are a few of the requirements, is that we service students that are in grades six through 12 at Portage. Portage is a school that's written into our grant. And 67% of the students in our program must self-identify as income-eligible or the first in their family to go to college. And the notion of first in the family to go to college is that neither biological parent, mom and dad, has a four-year bachelor's degree. So, therefore, they would be the first in their families to pursue a four-year bachelor's degree. And the other 33% of students can be anybody. Doesn't matter what educational attainment or financial bracket that the parent falls in. But 33% of the seats go to those students, while 67% go to first-generation college students. And I know that the technology boom, that people work best about dealing with the QR codes. But I wanted to leave the QR code for any student, parent, or community member that wants to learn more about the Trio program or would like to register their children to attend Portage Schools for the Trio program. The QR code would give you a direct link to the application that goes directly to my office, as well as my phone number, email contact, and ways that we can stay connected because it's so important that the community knows about these federal dollars that are right here in Porter County, that their, the children and the families may be qualified for. So, it's important that information is disseminated and a way to contact me as well to follow through with that. That's all I have. I wanted, before I close, I wanted to ask Maraisha if there's anything that you wanted to share with the board, the staff, the community, and our guests before we transition?
I think this is a really, really great program. I regret not doing it. I think I did it, like, signed up sixth or seventh grade. And I just started, like, actually going through two things, like, my junior year, this year. And I just started like, like actually going through two things like my junior year, this year, for this summer. And I regret not doing it before because you're learning all this stuff for your future. Like the trip we just went on, he was giving us all this advice to how you can get these college administrators to look at you, how you can stand out, how you could do your application, how you can make business cards to give to people and hand out to make yourself known to them because you never know who you meet. And that is really good to keep on. And he continued to do that throughout the entire trip. Like the baseball game, he constantly, like every inning would be like, you guys see that? You don't have to be a baseball player to be like the manager of the team or you could like do the news or whatever. Like he would always give you different job opportunities. So you wouldn't think, like, there's just one opportunity. There's always more you just don't know about. So it's a very good experience.
That's all I have, um Board of Education. Any questions that you would have for me or Maraisa at this time?
I'd just like to say, you know, Mr. Macy, this has been more than a few years now that you've came here and uh every year, it's, it's probably one of the best presentations that we have. It's exciting, the opportunities that you're bringing to our students. Um I mean, we can't repay you enough for. Uh I do have a question. Do you cap how many students or how do you go about recruiting those students? Or how do they apply to be part of the program?
Great question. Uh we're funded to serve six hundred and seventy-nine students in our program. And uh we split these seats between Michigan City High School of Lepore County and Portage High School of Porter County and River Forest High School of Lake County. And then there's a high school in Star County, uh North Judson, San Pierre. So those are the four high schools that we're splitting the six hundred and seventy-nine seats for the Trio program in. Um that pretty much uh connects to our funding source as well. So we're funded to serve six hundred and seventy-nine students. And uh just the dynamics of being able to be in the community of, of our Porter County and its uh schools that we service, we also have the two middle schools as well, Fagley and Willow Creek. So um those are pretty much our numbers in terms of how we break down. And the, the critical part of it is actually being out in the community and the schools recruiting students and recruiting families too that want post-secondary opportunities for their children, but necessarily don't know how. And that's where we come in as a partner for the schools to support them with um everything from Twenty-First Century Scholar support to active college tour, going on college tours, and a plethora of program services to prepare young people to transition to finish high school and transition to college and careers, which is also healthy for the workforce of Northwest Indiana, having a plethora of college graduates in the community.
Is there anything that we could be doing differently or more to assist you?
What you're doing now, uh allowing me to have the platform to come in and to bring students to share our experiences, to share uh some of the pro- program data and metrics. I think it's so great that the community hears about where their tax dollars are going. But it's assisting to the, assisting with this notion of helping Indiana become a college-going state and promoting a college-going culture. The state of Indiana as a whole, we, we rank uh pretty much at the lower quartile for awarding four-year bachelor's degrees, but number one in manufacturing exports because we have the limestone industries in southern Indiana and also the steel mills in northern Indiana. So we're trying to um lure Fortune five hundred businesses and companies to Indiana by virtue of our graduation pathways. So it's so cr- critical now more than ever that we uh promote college attendance to our, to the next generation of uh college students. But most importantly, I want the community to hear loud and clear that the state of Indiana has the most successful college scholarship promise in America with Twenty-First Century Scholars. Nowhere in, in America can you go and have a scholar track like we have in the state of Indiana with Twenty-First Century Scholars. And we have a plethora of universities from Purdue, IU, uh Butler, Notre Dame, IUPUI uh that offer post-secondary attendance and opportunities. And the scholar track can help make that happen as we rebound from COVID, but also help Indiana transition to a college-going state. And we can do it and be number one in um professional development, human capital development. Employers should get their uh clients from here and their employees from the state of Indiana.
Great, awesome. So um just thank you for everything you do, Rich. And thank you for coming tonight too.
Thank you.
This was awesome.
Talk to you guys.
Um before I let you sit down though, I'm opening up to the rest of the board. Do anybody have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions if you jump for me. Okay. Uh you just said about, no, this is for Ms. Frazer, thank you. Uh because my question, it was exactly what you just answered, is what would you say to students who may be on the fence about participating in the Trio program? So, Ms. Frazer, they gotta get on now. That's what you're saying, right?
Yeah. I don't think there is any negatives about it. You don't have to pay for anything. You're getting to go to these colleges and it helps your future. And like my age, seniors, juniors, you really stress about your future. Like it's really a big thing, so just having this program help you out with your future. It's like, it takes some of that weight off your shoulders and it helps your parents too because you're being able. Helps you good too because you're being able to go to these college tours that maybe your parents couldn't afford to take you or just didn't have the time to take you. So I think there's really no, nothing bad to it. It's not like you're having to pay to register, so.
Thank you. I, we appreciate you and it, and, and I did all with um trustee Maletta just shared. I'm a first-generation, low-income student graduate. I participate in Trio. Every time you come here, I say this, so the potentials are endless. I will tell anybody I want to produce. I'm re- I'm repping my stuff today and continue to further my education. So I always say your education really changes your future situation. So I, I definitely top this program. Um my mom and my dad have nothing more than a high school diploma. So um being able to sit here and, and, and be able to have access to these types of resources were very beneficial to my parents. So um I'm, I'm thankful for your mom and your mom is thankful for you for saying, okay, I'm on. I'm ready to go now, so I'm excited for that. So thank you so much for coming here to share to both um you, Ms. Frazer mom, and um definitely you, Mr. Rainey.
Well, I'm, I'm glad that you recognize that because Maraisa wants to apply to Purdue and she wants to um be a nurse.
Oh, okay.
And major in the health sciences. And we saw based on, on COVID how important uh healthcare workers are, how valued they are. But she has what it takes. She has what it takes and she's the real deal. And I know that wherever she ends up, she will be successful. She's got the parental support and she's got the vision. And all we're doing is just um fertilizing the seed that's already in her.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes, um thank you. Um I am unable to attend uh in person. Uh at Mr. Rainey, uh I'm attending a National Association for Health Centers. And one of the things that we're discussing is for individuals like yourself who serve and, and, and serve the community and those who work in, in health centers, uh we, we were talking about the what, the how and the why. And in two or three words, can you tell me your why?
Yes. Arthur Rainey, that's the first why. Arthur Rainey fought in World War Two. Marched with Dr. Marched with Dr. King in the sixties. That's my late grandfather. And um uh his message of education uh as a means of empowerment uh strongly considers and contributes to my why. And that's one of the things I try to share with students too, is to understand your why. Because that comes in handy when you're confronted with late-night studying, making decisions between whether I go to a party, hang out, or am I, am I disciplined enough to make a, a better decision? You have to look at your why for being here. And most importantly, the people who are riding on you and depending on you to carry the legacy of excellence and to be a strong citizen. For me, it was my grandfather. I saw and recognized uh what he and his cohorts went to, went through in the sixties for educational access and opportunity. Without their struggle, without their advocacy and sacrifice, there will be no Macy or Rainey as a college graduate working in a higher education. So there's a debt that I owe. And the way that I pay that debt is to help the next generation of students be all that they're, that they can be and take advantage of those opportunities that are there for them. So that's my why. I hope I didn't exceed the three. Mr. Rainey.
Thank, thank, thank you, uh Mr. Rainey. You know uh that your service has, has impacted so many students and families than you, you even realize. So with that, uh I just want to thank you again for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much for being here again tonight. And, and again, um we're open to anything that you need us to do with the more kids that can participate and the more opportunities um for our Portage kids. That's what we're all here for, so.
We've got him roped into all kinds of things.
I'm sure you do. I'm sure you do.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Laura.
Thank you.
Take care, thank you. Thank you.
Now, as we always tell our guests, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. You're welcome to, but if you've got other things to do, we don't want to bore you. Okay, sorry.
I got you, I got you, I got you.
So yeah, Mr. Fred Jackson. I guess you're on our agenda as well. I missed it, I'm sorry. Please come up. You're fine.
Great. So on, on the agenda, my name is Fred Jackson. I'm the Regional Coordinator for the Twenty-First Century Scholars and also a Department of Indiana Commission for Higher Education. I cover the entire region, that's uh ten counties, it's over a hundred and twenty schools. And with the Twenty-First Century Scholars Program, we think it's one of the best kept secrets in Northwest Indiana. Uh I've been with the uh Twenty-First Century Scholars Program for over twenty-eight years and saw the development of it and the growth of it. Uh right now, I would say we have a hundred and ten thousand kids who are enrolled into the program. But since the bill passed of simply enrollment, we're estimated to have over two hundred and forty thousand kids automatically enrolled into the Twenty-First Century Scholars Program. There's a lot of things that's taking place because we're tied into the governor's vision. And that is by the year of twenty twenty-five, uh to work in the state of Indiana, you have to be certified or degree. So there are many pathways to great success and things of which we are offering to uh students in the state of Indiana to how to achieve those things, you know, and to become successful in the avenues and talents in which they possess. And what I mean by that is that uh back in twenty twenty-two when COVID hit, uh we realized through the job market that there's a lack of employment, especially in the trades. Uh we found out there was uh eighty-nine thousand jobs in the trades, especially in the area of electricians. And so we looked at this and said, how can we change this? That how we can get more kids to focus in, yes, four-year institutions are well as well. And uh we need students to look at the trades. And so uh Ivy Tech has been one of the partners in which we have partnered in with this. And that we're, we offering kids that uh who didn't make the qualification, speaking of the, with the Twenty-First Century Scholars Program, to receive that particular award, you have to stay drug-free, crime-free, graduate from high school with a two-point-five GPA. And we found that some of our kids didn't meet that GPA. However, we didn't want to leave them behind or try not have an opportunity. So we came back with next-level jobs. With next-level jobs that where kids now can go and get training in those particular areas in the trades that where they have an opportunity to excel in that. And then also uh with Ivy Tech, they can receive an associate's degree in areas of studies and nursing and marketing and all type of things that where they're not left behind. Because what we realized through the stats that were, that we see that when students get a two-year uh certificate or uh associate's degree, they out immediately in the job, the job market. And we found that also with COVID, we have a new normal because of jobs in which we saw when we were young, those who are millennials, millennials are, you know, uh baby booms, I should say, uh that they're not in, in play anymore, in a sense. Now we have those who are in the area of drone flying. Uh and those in that areas because we uh, companies are mastering the skills of those who like to play PlayStation. So they like playing PlayStation, they know how to fly a drone, drone. And so we get, getting kids to look into that because all you have to receive is an associate's degree. And Purdue, of course, you guys offer that drone type of flying type of thing. That where they can go and pursue that and we have money that is set aside for them to uh receive an associate degree in that and many other areas of studies that where we leaving no kid behind. But with the Twenty-First Century Scholars Program, we have a whole lot of things that are developing, that's blooming out. First, I just mentioned about uh simply enrollment. And that is those students who are on reduced lunch, free reduced lunch, they automatically enroll into the program. Now with the formula as well, we know that there are some who won't make that cut, you know, who didn't, the parents didn't take advantage of uh free reduced lunch. But we still have the great majority of those who will make that cut, but we will still have to enroll those who come by way of income. So we leaving no one out of the equation. And so with that, that helps us to continue to uh make this offer to all young students throughout the state of, of Indiana. And then what we moving on with this as well is that we dealing with um what is called um uh financial new means. And what final means is this, is that we do a means test of finances and making sure that all our students meet that qualification as well. So at the end of the senior year, what the state is gonna do is to check and make sure that there's a financial need by still in their senior year. And so we found that there's only about just one percent that meet that. And that means that it's just a false, a one percent that students will not receive Twenty-First Century Scholars awards. But they still get the Frankel Bennett Awards and they get all the other awards because now you can stack scholarships. And what this bill also that opened up and other bills that was associated to this is that for instance, like the Erling Rogers uh Teacher Scholarship, it was the total amount that was allocated to that last year or year before that was like fifty thousand dollars. Now it's up to a hundred thousand dollars. And so we got more kids to comply for that. And then we have next gen, next generation, those who are interested to become educators or teachers. Uh we increased that one as well. So uh that will give an opportunity for those students who are really going to that area of studies, one, to become teachers. All they have to do is apply for that, that's seven thousand dollars a semester, seven thousand eighty-five hundred dollars a semester. And all they have to do is this, when they graduate, they can teach five years in the state of Indiana. They will have to pay that back. And so they complete the five years, they don't have to pay it back. But we just want to make sure we have something there for them to shoot after. And with that, also, we have just instituted the bill that's passed with called um pre-admission. And what pre-admission does is, is this, we have the cohort of twenty twenty-four that we working with now. And what we just done uh just the other day, which took us all this weekend to do this, is to upload all the twenty twenty-four and with schools who opt in to take advantage of pre-admission. It gives us the opportunity to share their information with college and university throughout the state of Indiana and send them an admission letter that said that you have been admitted to this particular school. So with the formula that we created, all these college and university throughout the state of Indiana, we have a list of them and then it will show up on their awards letter or any admission letters of what school have admitted them. And so that's an easy pathway for them to say, okay, I want to go to this school, this school. What do I have to do? Well, you're already enrolled, not enrolled, but admitted to this particular school. And so they take another weight off our kids so they can focus in what they need to do to continue to pursue for greatness. And so all these things are unfolding right now in real time as we speak. Uh the things of which we want to see and continue to do is to give kids an opportunity to succeed and to also meet the government's objective. Uh we want to see it happening through Northwest Indiana because I know I want to because right now I'm the only person that runs around ten counties and cover this type of uh area, it's kind of large. And just last meeting, I was applauding because they said, we're gonna send you some help. So I'm looking for the help as well. But this opportunity, we want to make sure that kids take advantage of. Uh too much money that has been uh allocated to the Twenty-First Century Scholars Program to really help students to achieve. And we need counselors and parents really echo this and get this into the kids mindset to be successful, this is the way that you can go and be debt-free. And with a trillion, one trillion dollars of debt, we can eliminate that by getting kids to participate in Trio and other programs that are out here that can assist them and help them to achieve that.
Great. That's incredible. Just incredible stuff.
I'll take any questions now, no costs.
Anybody have any questions?
I always have questions. Mr. Fred, hey, Mr. Jackson, how you doing?
Okay, how are you?
I'm doing fantabulous. The main question is, um what can we do to support you? Uh you said get the word out. I know next-level jobs is the one that is still probably falling on a lot of deaf ears, parents and, and, and people who are eligible, because I don't think there's income-driven requirements for this one, is there?
No, no, no.
I don't think people know that. So they shy away thinking that there is some income requirement. So what can we do to help you with? I don't think people know that. So they shy away thinking that there is some income requirement. So what can we do to help you with messaging?
Well, right now, uh, we're waiting for the state to update all new promotions and flyers, but we still haven't talked about it. Uh, we have one also where, uh, with you can go back. It's also to retool parents as well. Because the job market has changed and a lot of new skills are developing. And so parents can go back. So it's an advantage for kid, parents to go to school with their kids and really retool themselves in a way that where they can stay in the job market. Uh, the second is that is getting help with the school counselors. We learned through this test run, um, that for our grad details, those things should be taken care of at, in like in March and April, right before graduation. And so I think the communication line with counselors and us gets kind of messy a little bit because graduation is taking place. Uh, the only way they will know unless they upload that information to Scholar Track. So council needs to know that that needs, that's a priority. And so what we had to do is go back and clean up rosters, making sure kids are on or into the Scholar Track with all their, uh, grad details. Because if not, I just did one today. You can't, the student calling me, Mr. Jackson, I can't get to my Twenty First Century Scholars Award. So what I had to do is look him up and found out his grad details wasn't in. So I had to call the school, upload his grad details so his award can be, uh, disseminated. Because if not, school, kids go to that place, to the school that they're going to, but that grad details are not there, there's no award letter. There's no money there. And so we trying to push this, not trying to add more on the counselors, uh, assist, I mean, you know, schedule to do, but we're here to assist them and to help them. They send me the information, I can put it in or I can help them upload it. And so we looking for something to, uh, help and train counselors to do that because we found out, I found out as well, especially in my region, found a whole lot of counselor who retired or we finding out that we have someone else, uh, the administrative assistant or registrar to join all this. And they don't know about Scholar Track, how to pull this up in there. So it delays the process in a sense. But, uh, if we can get them to understand the importance of it and not delay on it, uh, it will help us a whole lot, especially getting the word out about the FAFSA form. Uh, because FAFSA, many of you may know that they won't have that until late December. And so our October date, October one is just thrown out the window, but we just don't know how, how they're going to extend it coming the spring. But, uh, if we can get students just to file their FAFSA form as soon as the information give us the green light to go on. They have the entire student body, senior cohorts of twenty twenty-four just to fill it out. Because there's so many opportunities that comes with that. You don't have to be a Twenty First Century Scholar, uh, recipient or be a part of Twenty First Century Scholars to receive other scholarships and awards. We had one young lady in the area that started in her junior year who graduated with a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar worth of scholarship loans. And so I said, if she did it, well, we can get a lot of kids to do the same thing. So you can stack scholarships. There are so many scholarships that's on their Scholar Track account, they can just start applying. That fit in that particular careers, uh, pursuit that they're looking for. But again, too, we have to have, like you said, parents need to be educated on this. Teachers and counselors need to be, uh, aggressive on this. These are the things that are out here because every day, every second, things are changing. We should, living in a changing world that now that the playground that we played in, you don't find anymore. The playground, as I told my colleagues, is right here. This is where we have to get to. And we have to build a playground that where this is where they know they can go to to find the information. Make it seamless and easy to access and show the results because we have students who have gone this route and we can promote that and let them know this is a way to success.
Thank you.
That's great. We really should, in our counselors, how we educate our counselors on these programs and
Absolutely.
um, making sure that they, they've got Mr. Jackson's phone number. It is extremely, extremely important, um, and utilize Melissa as well and, you know, and the great work that she does on getting the messaging out to our families of these programs. So as, you know, your flyers and your marketing material become available for us to push those things out to our families too. Because, yeah, I guarantee the majority don't have any idea of these programs. We read a little bit, you, you know, I think some people are more, more familiar with Twenty First Century Scholars and just that basic program. But all these other things you're talking about, I guarantee families don't know about. And so wherever, kids are missing out on opportunities. That, uh, we really should, you know, the way to set yourself apart and, um, is to make sure that we have those things available for our students and our families. Um, so that our kids can be successful.
And one other thing, I'll add this real quickly, is this now since simply enrollment is, is in effect. And, uh, we started with pre-admission, the focus is now having all kids to create a Scholar Track account. That's it. They don't have to be a Twenty First Century Scholar student, just fill out, make a Scholar Track account. Because that will give them the gateway to get in to receive other scholarships and awards that are available.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Thank you. That is great. Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
I promise and then I'll be done.
No, 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 no problem.
Because the legislation changed this year, effective July one, that students will be auto-enrolled in the, in middle school, correct?
Right.
Sixth, seventh grade, sixth, seventh, eighth grade.
Seventh and eighth grade.
I'm sorry, seventh and eighth grade, middle school. What happens if I trans, what if it happens if I decide to come to Portage High School later and I'm not from, um, I'm transitioned from another state like Illinois or Michigan? Am I eligible as a ninth grader?
Uh, no, there are disciplines and
Okay.
that are a place. And let me go back to the, uh, enrollment, uh, piece. To be part of program here, um, is this, this is a misnomer about this. Uh, when we put simply enrollment into effect, we came with a formula as well because we knew we had to grab, uh, the entire bundle and move it all forward. So this is the first time, not so much the first time, but we knew we had to calculate in the sixth graders who was going to the seventh grade. And so we had to calculate in the eighth graders who going to the ninth grade. So we moved all those up. Okay? And so, uh, we taking, are we?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's not me on the tape. But anyway, I'm not supposed to say something. So don't broadcast it down, uh, in Indy, all right? But, uh, the, 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 the thing here is since we, we, we moved them up. And so what takes place now is making sure all those who we moved up are in the, in the right space, you know? Uh, it, it takes that because we won't know until the latter part or the middle of September. Counselors will know because they're going to get an update by the second week of, uh, September to know what students have been moved up.
Okay.
So they can't do anything else. They can't see anything else because they don't, they won't have a Scholar Track ID or anything as such. They just know that students are up there. Parents will know, well, they won't know until the school lets them know. But we will be sending out letters to the parents of those whose child has moved out in Bediyan who are enrolled into the Twenty First Century Scholars Program. And from that particular moment, they can create a Scholar Track account. The only thing they need to do in Scholar Track when they finish is to agree to the pledge. And that's it. So anything one out, outside of that, and I had a call on that the, what, last week? Uh, because of the dynamics of the family shift that parent bring kid over. I heard about the program. Can we get in? And no, you missed that deadline. The thing is the seventh and the eighth grade. That's the only thing, the seventh and eighth grade. Uh, if we would do that because of the dynamics of the family would change in every cohort, we'll be a whole lot, a lot of money, you know, and we'll have to address every situation. And I know there we have certain mitigating circumstances that we do look into consideration, but you will have to be in the state of Indiana. Your parents have to be resident in the state of Indiana. And so if we have someone who comes from Illinois, using an example, they have children who are in the seventh and the eighth grade, they can apply. So they can, yeah. And we just, I just had a parent who became the foster guardian, uh, foster parent, uh, her nieces and nephews. And they was in foster care in Georgia. And so they, she moved them up here. The first question I was asked, do the parent live in Indiana? I said, yep. Are the kids in the foster care in Georgia? I said, no. They said, okay, we got a situation where now we can put these kids in the Twenty First Century Scholars Program.
Gotcha.
So there are certain things of where we can look at and see, but anyone that's exceeded or past that, the threshold of the ninth grade, you know, they have to have some really, uh, uh, substantial situations where they say, okay, we got to look at this and reconsider. Yeah.
Thanks, Mr. Jackson.
Oh, no problem.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Jackson? Okay, good. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Great programs. Appreciate it.
Thanks. President Moletta, one other, uh, just staff resignation, if I may. We do have our new athletic director in the audience.
I thought he was just here to watch.
Yeah, I thought he was. Uh, Mr. Brett Saint Germain, and I think he brought his better half along with him. So Brett, if you want to come on up. You can if you want.
Yeah, thank you. Only because this is being recorded.
Yeah, well, um, I can say that, uh, I don't know if any of you know, and you probably don't know this, that I started my career, um, in Portage. Uh, and I am in my thirty-first year. So for me, it's kind of a full circle move and, um, so there's a lot of exciting things about that. Uh, there's some people here in the room that I kind of cut my teeth with, kind of as a young coach and a young teacher, trying to kind of establish yourself, uh, um, in this, in this profession. Um, and I've been able to do a lot of different things, been a lot of different school corporations. So that being said, it's just a kind of a unique and special thing to be back. Uh, number one, uh, it's unique and special to kind of represent some people that, as I mentioned, um, you know, I, I get to kind of represent them now and, and, and make them proud. So, uh, I'm excited to be here. I'm happy to be here. I'm a little closer to home. My previous job, I was an associate principal at Michigan City High School. Uh, so I'm a little closer to home. I live in Valparaiso. But, uh, I just want to say thank you and I'm, I'm just happy to be here and hope to represent you well.
You're very welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Your only expectation is we need some state championships. No pressure.
No pressure.
Yeah, what we want are kids having a good, healthy, safe environment and athletics and, uh, all of that brings both to school and the community. So thank you.
And state championships.
And I did already express to Brett the importance of family time. So if you guys also would like to head out, you don't get many of those evenings home. So get out of here.
Yeah, you're not going to give her many of those.
Yeah, you're not. So get out of here.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, we'll move on. Are there any adjustments to the agenda from the board? If not, we'll go on to our superintendent's consent agenda, uh, which includes our personnel report for August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, donations, claims report and facility use request report. Do you have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve.
Do you have a motion to second? Any discussion? You're in on call roll, please.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez? Trustee Moletta?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Next, we have our board's consent agenda, which, uh, includes the amendments from our previous meeting on August the fourteenth. Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do you have a motion to second? Any discussion?
Trustee Vasquez? Trustee Moletta?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to board development and committee reports. Are there any, uh, board reports?
I have one from the, um, the county of, uh, Food Cantry. Uh, the, um, Food Cantry will be having a tag day, uh, as an annual fundraiser. It's going to be held on Saturday, the ninth of September, from ten until one. So the volunteers will be collecting donations at Stracks and other locations on Central Avenue. So we say a thank you in advance, uh, to those who will be participating in this fundraising event. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, we don't have any old business. We move on to new business. We have the approval of the resolution authorizing litigation against social media companies.
The resolution gives the school district permission to utilize the law firm of Wagstaff and Cartmal LLP to initiate litigation and file suit against any appropriate parties to seek comp, to seek compensation to the district for damages suffered by the district and its students as a result of the development, operation and marketing of social media platforms and to seek any other appropriate relief. This will also allow myself to sign all appropriate documents and fee agreements on behalf of the district. Of course, this has been, um, in direct collaboration with attorney Elwood, and I'm sure he might have some further insight.
It's the same, uh, group that did the class action against Jewel. Um, it's really a no-brainer because it's, it's free money. Uh, obviously, I know this board also supports the premise behind some of the negative effects on our kids, uh, caused by social media. So I would recommend approval of the resolution.
Similar to the Jewel lawsuit, um, we, although not part of the terms of that agreement, I'm not going to say anything out of turn, I promise. Um, we are utilizing those funds specifically when the time comes to educate our students on harmful effects and, you know, preventative strategies and all of those things. And this would be a similar situation with, um, how dollars would be utilized, um, in the event that they were awarded in the, in the future, how we help our students and families to better understand the harmful effects, the appropriate use, the self-regulation, um, and those dollars, you know, putting them back into helping have a safer, healthier school community when it comes to dealing with social media.
Do we need to read the resolution?
No, you've read it by title.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing litigation against social media companies?
I make.
Motion to approve.
A second? Oh, sorry. Wilma, you're second. Are you seconding? Oh, okay. Yay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Moletta?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Okay.
Next, we have permission to advertise for fuel bids.
So, um, I had previously sought the board's approval for a six-month extension, um, to September of twenty twenty-three with our current vendor for fuel. So, um, we are now at that point to go out to bid. So bids will be received at our school attorney's office, Raymond Elwood and, Raye Elwood and McClure, thirty-two hundred Willow Creek Road, Suite A, Portage, Indiana, until eleven AM on Friday, September fifteenth. All bids will be publicly opened and read aloud at five PM September eighteenth at the school board discussion meeting at our administration building here, six-two-four-zero U.S. Highway six, Portage, Indiana, at five PM.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to advertise for fuel bids?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Do you have a motion to second? Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Moletta?
Yes.
And next we have our contract approval for Portage High School curriculum, Turn It In for the IT department, Power School Enrollment and Secure Tech Solutions and for curriculum, TICN contract, our TICNER contract.
So, uh, Turn It In, this is a program, um, I met with Jody Newby, who is the, um, department chair for language arts this school year. And they have been using Turn It In and we're expanding it beyond the language arts department at the high school and also going to expand further into the middle schools this year. But additionally, there is now an AI detection for all of those things, such as ChatGPT. Um, we also have some ability within there to do written and verbal feedback on student work. Um, that is very, um, interactive for the students within the content of Turn It In. Um, our teachers also can evaluate students' work more quickly, um, give them opportunities to give more feedback that's more meaningful, more frequently. Um, and also easy peer editing feedback that is anonymous. So you don't know who's writing you're getting. Um, we're also talking about, this was Jody, who just kind of threw a quick brainstorm, maybe having some general opportunities where then there are prompts already built in in all the content areas where then teachers could have students write to particular prompts that are then graded by the system. So it's a really, it's a great tool and we want to continue to see how to expand that. Um, our Power School Enrollment, uh, it is what it is as far as it is enrollment. So that is what that subscription is. Also Secured Tech Solutions, this is our parent and guardian opt-in accidental damage protection. So you do not have to provide, you do not have to purchase the protection plan for your one-to-one device. If you recall, last year, legislation changed where then you could no longer put it in textbook rental. And of course now, that's not even a possibility at all, but parents have the opportunity to opt in. Um, we did that just in our own home, twenty-five dollars for sixth through eighth grade. Um, and in grades nine through twelve, it is a multi-year accidental damage plan. Um, and it ranges anywhere from fifty-nine dollars to a hundred and seventy-four dollars. And you also get a case with that, correct? Um, so that's also good. Uh, I think it's also very important to, to just note that in the event that a student does break it, it's a great opt-in option as well, that if it breaks within ten days after the breakage, they can still opt in after the initial break. I'm assuming there might be a little bit higher of a fee if they opt in a couple of days after that breakage. But it's at least something I think that is a, a good faith effort to say, you know, hey, okay, there was your warning. You probably need to get some damage protection on this. And then, um, the Brennico fire alarm for Myers, this is a retroactive approval. Um, as you know, with the recent, uh, which now seems a while back, um, while we were at NSBA in the spring, that severe storm that severe storm that came through and really hit that west side of town, um, this is to replace the fire alarm system at Myers.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the contracts, that's red?
Motion to approve.
I make motion to approve the contracts.
Second.
Do a motion to second, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, call roll please.
Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Moletta?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes.
Okay, next, we'll move on to our superintendent reports. Dr. Allenz.
I have given Mahafa the go ahead to advertise and begin callouts for the fall play, but it will also be on the next agenda for the board. Of course, I did not want to spend time in between times, so the fall play will be The Witch's Princess. Um, it's about a kingdom that's cursed and the queen is uh dead and they are trying to figure out who will slay the e, the evil bog witch. So I think it's going to be interesting to see the scenes, the costumes for this. It's it's a, it's a, another wholesome opportunity for families to come out and all ages to enjoy. Um, I'm part of a deregulation committee uh with various super, superintendents across the state. Uh, we did have our first meeting today, a lot of it focused on the assessment component with I read, I'm sorry, I learn um, variance between um how people are utilizing different student information systems and would we want to look at being required to use all the same systems now that we have data exchange and all of these things going in and uh just how seamless, how not very seamlessly things are going. Um, but everyone's just trying to put in that good effort to see how we can best address those things, as well as things like the yearly uh fire extinguisher training. Can we just opt to, you know, do that every so many years? Or do you agree that once you've taken that at training on your onboarding, that you'll keep yourself updated on how to utilize a fire extinguisher? Because although they've deregulated a lot of that stuff, it's still awfully timely, um, still yet on some of those. Also, just to share, I want to thank Dr. Stevens and our IT team, um, our teachers in particular. I know, I believe it's Isaac who is really involved in the new lines, correct, at the elementary school. Matt's words today were that the teachers are finding tricks and trading tips on how to do things with their new line panels faster than we can keep up with teaching them things to do, so it's kind of cool. Middle school will be getting those at uh Fagley and then the high school and then Willow Creek within the coming couple of weeks. Um, kind of an odd order, just depending on who had some storage, so we could start first at Fagley because they did not. Um, HVAC, Nick reached out to both Sailor and Central. The teachers are really pleased with those new vertical units, we're going to have an upcoming meeting there. They are quiet. Uh, Michelle Helwige at Sailor confirmed to us that last week's heat definitely was a true test and the rooms were nice and cool. And as you know, Chrisman will be next. Now, it is a different system, they do not have unit ventilators in every room. It is an underground system, kind of more centralized, so, but they are also uh getting a new system, but that will be for next summer. I'm excited because then Central and Sailor, although another summer of being tore up, theirs will next, they will next receive new flooring in all of their rooms. It kind of had to be a two-step process and then we'll continue to move along and and see what we do next to continue these, these uh projects to continue to increase air quality while doing the various other things we're doing. Um, only other thing I just wanted to mention, Cube Conference, I know we keep bringing that up every so often, excited for that, um, September fourteenth and fifteenth in Chicago. And I know myself, Trustee uh Finley and Trustee Vasquez are attending that. And then, of course, many of us have ISBA September twenty fifth and twenty sixth. So September is a very busy month, but I think it's one of the most productive times uh in the year for all of us as far as getting some really good professional development and some networking, good ideas. And then I'm hopeful that I'll get some other ways to help in that deregulation committee and see what others were thinking and other, generate some other ideas with other groups.
Dr. Allenz is on the online agenda. The trustees saw Tinker was on there, but it wasn't on this one.
Oh, okay.
So I just want to make sure that if you want to consider that, that you say it.
Okay, so Tinker, thank you. Tinker is um the other contract that was sent out, I apologize. And that contract is specific to meet our computer science requirements. And I believe that is middle school, correct? Elementary, I'm sorry, elementary school. I'm going to try to pull it up here.
If you get to us on page nineteen.
Okay.
If not, I can sure, I can give you mine.
For some reason, I can't get it pulled up.
No worries.
Teamwork, let's go.
Thank you so much.
You're more than welcome.
Okay, so Tinker, um, this is the premium plan. So this is our district level license um for classroom and student metrics, detailed student progress usage, and this is to meet our computer science standards um in elementary school, August first, twenty twenty three through June thirtieth of twenty twenty four. And that is a total quote of thirty thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars after the discount. And that includes all of the curriculum, teacher resources, um, the training and the licensing.
I mean, it was already, we already approved it.
Yeah, it was on the list.
It was already on the list and it was in our information packet.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
You just gave the overview.
Gotcha, okay. I just missed that then, okay.
Okay, anybody have any questions or comments for uh Dr. Allenz? I assume we did not receive any
Did not.
public comment forums. So our next meeting um will be on September the eleventh at five PM. No one has anything else, meeting's adjourned.